All your face. I would like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, September 12th, 2022. The time is 5:31 PM. And I will do a roll call from my far left, Councilmember Look.
Here.
Councilmember Dorset.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lichten.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
And Councilmember Barber.
Here.
And I am Mayor Mark Lee. So nice to see you again. As I said, if you would please stand and join us for the Pledge of Legions. Thank you. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Skoposh Band of the Piala Tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest standing historic villages of the people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight, Council? Councilmember Look?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to pull item number four from the consent agenda.
Okay. We will move this to new business five. Okay. Excuse me. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstain? Motion passes six zero.
A point of order, I was the nay.
I'm sorry, six one. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are excited to have with us some very special people tonight. We have our flower basket waterers who have been so diligent in keeping our downtown gorgeous over the summer with our beautiful hanging flower baskets. And so I would like to invite any of you who are who volunteered with the Downtown Waterfront Alliance with the flower baskets to come forward, if you would. I'd like to acknowledge you. We all would like to acknowledge you. And we have certificates up here for you as well. Don't be shy. Don't be shy. And I think maybe, Mary, if you want to grab a photo, you certainly can. Okay, so I'm gonna, Robin, do you want to? Yes. Yeah. Did you want to say anything? Say a few words?
Again, the only thing I will say is that it's a wonderful opportunity to have a lot of fun getting up really early in the morning and driving the city truck around and watering the flowers and getting to know all of our habitual walkers and runners early in the morning. I will do a shout out if anyone knows someone who likes to be a flower waterer and joins the same crew. It's a huge honor to be a flower waterer. You get a certificate. Now, I love doing it and I want to thank all my fellow flower waters and encourage more people to volunteer.
So for the record, I'm going to read all of the names of the volunteers before I read the certificate. And so if you're here and you, and I call your name, please wave your hand so that we can recognize you. Mark Anderson, Marty Anderson, Harris Atkins, Richard Bailey, Carrie Betts, Larry Bros, Robin Denson, Chris Deisart, Jonathan Espino, Tanya Espino, Bill Evans. Hi, Bill. Erin Goodwill, Kurt Grimmer, Jennifer Hamilton, Diane Irwin, Bill Llewellyn, Dave Montour, I hope I'm saying that right, Stephen Owen, Mary Ann Pike, Lorraine Ralston, David Ringley, Dick Russell, Pat Schmidt, Werner Stillner, Colleen Stratton, John Stratton, Ken Tolar, and Kelly Wolf. And those are our amazing volunteers. So the certificate of appreciation, as Mayor Gig Harbor Washington, I'd like to extend the highest appreciation on behalf of myself and the city council to all of you and all of our volunteers for extensive hours of volunteer service, keeping our city's flower baskets watered and beautiful for our citizens and visitors to enjoy, given to you this 12th day of September, 2022. So if we could all honor them with a round of applause. Thank you so much. And the certificates are right down here. Josh can give those to you. And then, Mary, if you wouldn't mind gathering up the rest and delivering those, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Let me just, I just had that this is the program of the Downtown Waterfront Alliance.
Yes.
That is correct. She's amazing and she really makes it all happen.
Yes, she does. Mary is a rock star around here. So we like to call her anyway. Yes, I will. Well, I can, we can all stand behind you. Let's do that. You can, you can if you want. We can squeeze, we can all squeeze in a little bit. Yeah.
Well.
Okay, let's see. Brenda or Councilmember Lichten, excuse me. Okay. Okay, one, two, three. Great. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Thank you so much. And we had a change to the agenda late this afternoon. The Gig Harbor canoe and kayak racing team, I am going to be acknowledging them on October 10th for their win. They are all still out of the country or on their way back into the country. And we wanted them to all be able to be here to receive that honor. So that will be on the October 10th meeting for those that maybe didn't catch that change earlier. Um, so this picture that you see up there, this was our Harbor Hounds event on Saturday, and I got to judge the winners. And they were, it was just a fantastic group of people with their dogs. This is Echo. He won Best in Show for most ribbons, most ribbons achieved. I can't remember all the prizes he won, but I think best, best tail wag, best kisser, I think, best trick, I think. So anyway, they, he was just so sweet. All the dogs were so sweet, hoping for a large turnout next year as well. So that was so much fun. Thank you to Gig Harbor Midday Rotary and to Mayor Protem Denson, who was our MC. She did a fabulous job. And the hardest was the musical, what was it? What'd they call it? Musical? Sit and stay. Yes. And so it was like musical chairs for dogs and they had to walk them around until the music stopped. And then the last one to sit down on command was out. And so we did that until the last dog was sitting and it was just so funny. So come on out next year for that. That was so fun. I wanted to say thank you to our two planning commissioners that have served us for the last four years, Greg Hoeksmann and Amanda Bennett, for their time on the Planning Commission. We have some appointments this evening and for a couple of new people on the commission. And I just am so grateful to all of our volunteers who selflessly give of their time and their energy and they come and they, they volunteer and they're just amazing. So I wanted to give a special thanks to them. They couldn't be here tonight, but we do have certificates for them that we're going to send out to them and make sure that they receive those. So the last thing is I wanted to remind everybody that we have a ribbon cutting ceremony coming up on the 15th, so this Thursday at 10:00 AM down at the Twelvet Cut Estuary at Austin Park for the Our Fisherman, Our Guardian statue that is going to be unveiled. And it's going to be just a beautiful ceremony with the tribe there and just very significant way to honor the Piala Tribe and our, the first inhabitants of Gig Harbor. So it's going to be really, really beautiful and, and moving. So if you can make it, come on down at 10 o'clock. I think the Harbor History Museum has offered their parking lot for additional parking. So we thank them as well. So you should be able to find a spot to park and come down and join us. So that concludes my report. And I will turn it over to our city administrator, Katrina Knutson, for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just two quick things tonight, and I did send an email to this regard as well, but the governor has indicated that the COVID emergency and declarations will expire on October 31st of this year. And your city leadership team is working to unravel. I don't know if that's the right word, but go back to our regulations, the way that they were previously, and that's going to take some work, but we are committed to getting that done. Some of the examples of work that we'll need to do are to contact folks that have been utilizing the special use suspension and for the encroachment permits, et cetera, and work to get them either back into compliance or permit submitted for tents that may be in certain areas or other things that may have been constructed in areas not previously approved. Our HR human resources team will need to pivot our HR policies back to pre-COVID standards. So we'll need to see how that deals with masking and quarantine. We have a lot of work to do there, but again, committed to doing that. The city clerk's office will be working to ensure that all of our boarding council commission meetings are being done consistent with OPMA standards. You may recall the state had banned plastic straws, utensils, et cetera, and that was temporarily suspended for COVID. That will be coming back. So we'll be working to make sure that we're consistent with those. And then Director Langholm and his department will be working on the utility side of things for bills where we have not been shutting off water, for instance, for people that, for non-payment during the COVID time. So Jeff's department will be taking the lead on that and figuring out how the city is going to resolve those items. And if anyone has questions, in the meantime, we will be providing regular updates, but feel free to reach out to me and I'll make sure that you're aware. The second item is, we're pleased to announce that the 2022 employee survey was sent out to all staff today. So that will be open for a period of two weeks. We did ask all of the same questions that were asked in 2020. So we'll be able to get a good gauge of where we've improved and areas that we still have improvement work to do. And we're committed to working through those to make our work environment the best that it can be. There were some additional questions that we've asked pertaining to telework and flexible schedules. As we know, COVID has transitioned a little bit of the workspace environment of what employees would like to see in terms of their, their workday. And so we're interested to see what the city as a whole would like to do as far as those policies moving forward. And we will be sure to incorporate the results of the survey with staff and council. So that will be broadcasted to everyone. And we will create a path working forward with staff working groups on the areas that are noted for, in most native improvement. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Katrina. And also, being that we're back in person, thank you for your grace as we're getting used to getting back to in-person meetings. It's, we have a lot of shuffling around to do today, tonight, which you'll, you'll see, but I wanted to introduce our staff that are here with us tonight. We have our city clerk, Josh Stecker. If he could just wave your hand so people can see who you all are. Our city attorney, Daniel Kenny, our public works director, Jeff Langholm, our principal planner, Carl DeCemus, our interim HR director, Shannon Costanti, and Chief Bucy, Kelly Bucy. And am I missing anybody? I don't think so. So thank you all for being here, staff. And then anyone that's joining online, I can't see who is online, but welcome to our online audience as well. And any staff that are watching and participating online as well. We're glad you're here. So we will move on to the public comment portion for non-agenda items. So anything that is not on our agenda, if you have a public comment that you would like to make, we'll start with the people that are here in person. If you'd like to come forward to the podium, you can do that at this time. Okay, seeing none, I will open up the public comment for our online audience. And Josh, were there any written comments received for non-agenda items?
No, there are no written comments this evening.
Okay. And do you see any hands raised for audience online?
I do not have anyone raising their hand online.
Okay. All right. Well, then we will close the public comment on non-agenda items. And we will now go into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss potential litigation per RCW42.30.110 parentheses, one parentheses, I. No action will be taken following the executive session. So if you all would like to just stay comfortable, grab a glass of water, we will be back in 15 minutes or maybe longer. Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Monday, September 12th. We have returned from executive session where no action will be taken. The time is, I think that clock vector is not right, 6:05. Like, it's 4:04. Interesting. Okay. We are going to move right along to our new business item one, which is our public hearing. This is the first reading and adoption of ordinance 1497, renewing the moratorium on acceptance of new lodging level one applications. And the suggested motion is to move to approve ordinance 1497. Our report comes to us tonight from our principal planner, Carl DeCemus. Hi, Carl.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council, members of the public. Before you tonight is an ordinance, ordinance 1497, that would extend the current moratorium on the acceptance of lodging level one permit applications, which currently include short-term rentals for a period of six months. This will be the second extension of the moratorium originally enacted by ordinance 1467, adopted on September 27th, 2021, and then extended on March 28th, 2022 by ordinance 1484. The current moratorium expiration date is September 28th, 2022. Since the adoption of the last moratorium, staff worked with Planning Commission to draft several iterations of draft short-term rental regulations. Consider public comment and hold two public hearings. There has been a lot of interest from the public on this subject, and staff has worked very hard to ensure the process has been open and considerate to date. Unfortunately, we are not quite ready to present an ordinance yet. This extension, if enacted, will provide staff the necessary time to analyze a case that was recently brought to our attention. The subject of that case is based upon short-term rental regulations and as such is deserving of some legal review. This would also give staff additional time to refine the current draft short-term rental regulations and ensure we are on solid legal ground overall. Staff recommends the council adopt ordinance 1497 and provide a directive to implement the proposed work program included within the body of tonight's agenda bill for this subject. If a move to adopt the ordinance tonight is made at this first reading, it would require the affirmative vote of a majority plus one of the council membership. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Carl. Are there any clarifying questions from council for Carl? Okay, seeing none. I will open up the public hearing. And just as a reminder, all remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any specific council member. All speakers shall be courteous in their language and deportment and shall not engage in or discuss or comment on personalities or indulge in derogatory remarks or insinuations with regard to any council member, the mayor, or any member of the staff or of the public. For those in the audience that, that wish to provide public comment, you will have three minutes and you can come forward to the podium. When you see the yellow light flashing, that will tell you that you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your comments. And then the buzzer will go off at the end of three minutes and we'll, we'll stick to that three-minute timeframe. So is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak on this agenda item? Okay, thank you. And when you come forward, if you would, please state your full name and home address for the record, please.
My name is Karen Busic McDonald, 14410 Sherman Drive Northwest, Gig Harbor. I am a third generation Croatian who grew up in the Millville area of Gig Harbor, in the home my parents still live in. Our neighborhood was made up of many Croatian immigrants who were relatives of mine or who came to this country from other areas in Croatia, almost all of whom were fishermen. This may sound boastful, but I think this tight-knit enclave of Croatians shaped the culture and identity of Gig Harbor. When I have gotten active in Gig Harbor politics, it is mostly to preserve Gig Harbor's identity as a small and unique fishing village that tourists come here to enjoy and that we Croatians can hold on to. I want to encourage you to extend the moratorium more than two weeks, if possible, and and really study the ramifications of having, you know, I feel like when you accept a big change like this in land use, you're flipping a switch from, you know, Gig Harbor being a hometown to Gig Harbor being a tourist town. So one of the things we've seen when expansion of vacation rentals occur in communities is that real estate prices go up. People start outbidding one another to get real estate homes because they're going to have a whole bunch of rental income. And like in the case of Leavenworth, my nephew works there. He builds custom homes. He said that it's just created an adversarial community and that there are people who have gotten vacation rentals and done so well, they've quit their jobs. So he has a friend, friends that the husband is a neat nurse, the wife is a teacher. They got a vacation rental. They made so much money. They quit their jobs. Now the community has one less nurse and one less teacher. And so these are ramifications that, you know, we're not considering as we move forward on this in a manner that I feel like is happening very quickly. So I, I just, you know, can't say enough of how important it is to me that we maintain, it's in your strategic plan, maintain the quiet charm of Big Harbor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this agenda item? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Carolyn Allen. I reside at 3526 Harborview Drive. I co-founded Gig Harbor Short Term Rental Alliance to protect my rights and the rights of others as they pertain to the issue of what we have before us, setting fair and reasonable regulations for short-term rentals based on data, best practices, and the law. As the group has grown from two to 449, I have heard many personal stories, the reason STR owners have become hosts, and the many benefits their homes bring to the city. What I have not heard is that these homes have caused any harm, disruption, or any negative effect on the community. I can personally vouch for that as I live within two blocks of five short-term rentals and one bed and breakfast and a partridge and a pear tree. The emergency moratorium started with fear, drama, and what-ifs, all of which we have not seen in the over seven years short-term rentals have existed in our city. A recent social media reference stated, when the blistering months of January, February, March, and April come along, STRs are usually empty. Visits to relatives, attending funerals, weddings, or coming to the hangar clinic for rehab still happen. People still need a place to stay when a family member is ill and being treated in our local hospital, when someone's home floods, or when a baby is born. The post goes on to say Gig Harbor residents are still shopping, perhaps implying our Gig Harbor residents will pick up the slack in sales during the rainy season for our downtown business owners. I would be curious to hear our business owners' reaction to this odd view of the downtown economy and their ability to thrive with limitations placed on visitors to our city. Having the support of over 500 members of the Gig Harbor Chamber of Commerce indicate they support what short-term rentals bring to their revenue and the revenue our city receives in lodging tax. Their support, support should speak volumes. We all want to support our large lodging tax advisory committee's goals as they publicly posted in their 2022 press release to increase overnight accommodations for visitors traveling from over 50 miles away. Short-term rentals directly support that goal. And of course, we want to be a welcoming city. We have dozens of letters that have been sent to you from our members. Today, we ask that you extend the moratorium for short-term rentals to allow us and the rest of the community to work on fair and reasonable regulations that include property rights, welcoming others that need a place to stay, supporting our downtown businesses, and abiding by the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that wishes to speak on this agenda item? Yep. So for public hearing, City Clerk Stecker, if you would explain the difference in public hearing comment versus public comment on, on not a public hearing. And then you would be more than welcome to come forward and read your letter.
Yeah. So the written comments received are in the public hearing record, which is now posted on the city's website with the agenda. So if your comment was emailed to me, to the city clerk email address, it's included in that online right now. So you can make additional comment as well, but it is in the record if it was sent.
Sure.
Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I, one thing I've learned throughout this entire process is that Melville is a very important area. I totally get it.
Mayor, we need the name and address.
Oh, I'm.
Yes, and, and also if you could move the microphone a little closer to you. Thank you.
You got it.
So we can hear you.
Glenn Peterson, 8921 Franklin Street, Gig Harbor. So it's a small duplex up there. But as I've learned about this entire process and learned about our history in Melville, we don't have that, that legacy history here in Gig Harbor. We've only been here about 17 years, but our kids grew up here and this is our community. We value it. I'm going to retire. So is my wife. And, you know, this is, this is where we have our roots, our kids, you know, even though they have different places, all come back home and, and, you know, hopefully they can build a life here as well. So I'm just going to spitball a little bit here. It, this is a, I understand a very frustrating issue for a lot of, for a lot of folks. And it seems like it's splitting the community in half in a lot of cases. I can tell you that the, the folks that are part of the Short Terminal Association are very interested in finding some just common ground. I don't think any of us want to see the entire landscape peppered with STRs. That's, that's not the objective. But a couple of things that really stand out that make Gig Harbor unique and different as it relates to STRs, and as we look at these, these rental regs, is that almost every one of these are owned locally. So I don't live, we live right across the spit. So I'm 400 feet away from being within the city limits and, but I still have a connection, right? And almost everybody here does as well. That is very different than I'll say almost any other city. The number of rentals that we have here, the short-term compared to population, we ran the numbers many, many times. It ranges between 0.04 and 0.08% based on population, very, very small number. The impact on affordable housing, livability, there's no data to support that. I think it's an anecdotal argument you can always make. You can always make arguments related to crime noise, but the fact is, we don't have that, that there is no data to support any of that. So I guess I would ask, you know, council, you know, please look at this and mayor, look at this, you know, very closely. I think there is a lot of common ground here. And as I looked at the, the regs put together by Carl and his team, it doesn't seem like there's that much of a gap. It, it just seems like we, we cleaned up a few things. I submitted seven recommendations. We could probably make this work. And there's a lot of other ways you can go about limiting STRs based on something other than, you know, location. It could be, again, percentage of population. In other words, there's, there's options that we can all explore. So I thank you for your time.
You're very welcome.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this agenda item? Welcome.
Thank you. Day.
And, and yes, and a reminder to state your full name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Edward Nadler, 9401 Harborview Drive. Good evening, everyone. Allowing short-term rentals as a home occupation resolves many issues put forth on both sides of the debate. I request that the council restricts short-term rentals to only STR1 as defined by the Prop. I request that the council restricts short term rentals to only STR one as defined by the proposed short term rental regulations. The strategic plan priority of fourteen ninety seven is to maintain small town character and historic preservation while growing responsibly. Instinctively, this makes sense to me. I've wondered what it might mean to others. The American Planning Association defines community character as the distinct identity of a place. It is the collective impression a neighborhood or town makes on residents and visitors. What does Gig Harbor wish to be? Are we a tourist destination bent on turning a profit? Or are we a community of families? Small town character is about our residents and their shared values, our common goals, civic pride, closeness to family and friends. The National Park Service defines historic preservation as a conversation with our past about our future. A way for us to transmit our understanding of the past to future generations. Gig Harbor was a village of the Puyallup tribe. Later, a European fishing village boat building and logging. Later, fishing cabins became primary residences. Housing and retail development sprung up to accommodate a growing residential population. Today, Gig Harbor is a very active place for residents and tourists with small businesses offering shopping, dining, entertainment, and recreation. We recognize and honor the Puyallup tribe. Our gig festival, net sheds, and boat shop honors our maritime history. Many of our community events also attract tourism. We're able to share our community with others, honoring the past while supporting the future. What does land speculation in the form of STRs honor? Regarding growing responsibly, I'd refer everyone to an article entitled, One Hundred and Small Ways You Can Improve Your City. The article offers creative and fun ideas on how to help the community grow and improve. There are suggestions on affordable housing as well as community shelters. Several suggestions require you get to know your neighbors. Restricting short term rentals is a compromise that will assist many in Gig Harbor without eroding the community and its neighborhoods, without subjecting the community to further speculation and inflated home values and wondering who's living next door to us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item tonight? Okay, seeing none. Josh, are there any hands raised online?
Yes, we have Bonnie O'Malley had her hand raised. Let's see if she's like she has lowered it. I don't see any hands raised currently. Oh, she's.
She coming back on?
Let me see. I'll get I'll allow her to speak and see if she's going to unmute.
Okay.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, Bonnie O'Malley, eighty one oh one Baybridge Avenue. I'm a co-founder of the Gig Harbor Short Term Rental Alliance. I'm not sure if what you were just saying was that we're not allowed to read the letter that we sent in earlier. There was a lot of confusion over that since your agenda posted that it would be read. And that was our assumption. So I'm going to go forward a little bit with that because I have strong opinions, just like all of you. But I believe that personal opinion has no place in the decision making process of the governing bodies of the city of Gig Harbor. And as citizens of this community, we count on you to listen to opinion, to research the data, and to legislate based on documented facts solely in the interest of what's best for Gig Harbor and its citizens. But as we proceed to communicate through this web of regulation for short term rentals, I hope that you will move forward with the development of strict guidelines in the form of a code of ethics, rule of conduct policy for council and affiliated governing bodies associated with this legislation. I listened to your entire retreat and I felt was a very positive and much needed start. To date, I feel that pro STR individuals and entities have been victims of influential bullying by the spread of misinformation and personal opinion on social media and in public contact. It's totally unacceptable behavior for council members who decide the fate and financial well being of a substantial number of residents of this city. I believe that we are victims of unethical dissemination of prejudicial misinformation. And I believe this behavior reflects badly on the council as a whole. And as such, I have the following concerns. Whether all members of the council can be objective regardless of their personal opinions, whether members of the council will eliminate the undocumented and unprovable problems and complaints and the perception of what could happen in the city of Gig Harbor that we keep hearing but that we see no documentation of. Whether fees and fines will be administered equally and will not be exorbitant as a means of limiting these STRs. Whether primary residence stipulations or other highly restrictive regulations will be applied solely as a means of eliminating STR opportunities. Whether state mandates for studies on affordable and attainable housing will become unjustifiable means to persecute STR owners as a basis to limit licensing. We are entitled to make a living. We have constitutional rights that must be considered above all else. Whether the application process will be equal for all on all levels, including for those who've been most vocal according to the favor of STRs or advocating the favor of STRs. And whether council members have a personal win or lose stake in final regulations based on a preconceived agenda, including connections and friendships that have instigated and influenced this process for no other reason that they personally do not want STRs.
The three minutes is up. But we thank you so much for your comment. And appreciate you being online tonight to attend this meeting with us. Josh, are there any other comments from our online audience or hands raised?
I have no other raised hands.
Okay. All right, we will close the public hearing on this agenda item. And I will open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Barber.
Yes, I support ordinance fourteen ninety seven and extending the moratorium. And I want to say I greatly appreciate the hard work of staff, our attorney, and the planning commission in this process. It has been a really long haul, and unfortunately, we aren't there yet. I also want to thank the members of the public who've taken an active interest in this topic and provided public comment. And I look forward to being able to use the extension so that we, as the the council, can continue to engage the public and prepare regulations that address everyone's concerns. I would ask that we use this time to engage more of the public in this issue and that staff work to determine the impact short term rentals have on our business community as well as possible detrimental effect in residential areas. I've stayed in STRs like I'm sure most of you have, and so I appreciate that they're a wonderful place to vacation and come with a lot of rules that protect nearby residents. I've also heard a lot of stories locally about traveling nurses who stay in STRs here in town. And it gives them a place to stay instead of a motel. If you're staying somewhere for that long while you're traveling, you don't need to stay in a hotel that long, and it's also more affordable. I like the flexibility of STRs, and I like the regulations from the booking companies. At the same time, I understand the concerns our residents have that are worried that STRs would bring a degradation to our neighborhoods. Those and other valid concerns need to be heard and addressed along with the possibilities of STRs. And I am confident, as has been said tonight several times too, that we can find a way together to retain the character of our wonderful small town while also supporting the businesses so we can allow this type of housing. It takes time and a village to do this type of thing correctly. And I support our taking that time.
Thank you, Councilmember Barber. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, I'd like to move to approve ordinance fourteen ninety seven.
I'd second.
Second.
Okay, Josh, did you catch who the the second the second was there? Okay, and Councilmember Rothenberg, you had your hand or your light on?
I was just going to move that we accept the ordinance. I support it a hundred percent.
Okay. All right, if there are no other questions from council, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. Okay, so moving on to our item number two is our professional services contract amendment for thirty eighth half with roadway improvements, phase two for our sewer main. And this suggested motion is to move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute to execute a professional services contract with KPFF Inc. in an amount not to exceed twenty seven thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. And this report comes to us from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham. Hi, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. As you saw on the council agenda bill that you provided for tonight, back in two thousand and seven, the city constructed dry sewers in and around what we call Basin Ten, which is Fifty Sixth Street, Thirty Eighth Avenue in that area of town. The dry sewers were installed back in two thousand and seven because of the substantial depth that was required to install gravity sewer in this area. The section of dry sewer that was installed from in Fifty Sixth, essentially from like it's Thirty Sixth West to Thirty Eighth is about twenty four feet deep. And so since we were doing all of our roadway improvements at that time and widening the roadway and putting sidewalks in, we decided to go ahead and put all the dry sewer in instead of pulling the road apart at some point in the future to put the sewer in. And so we have staffs looked at the Basin Ten Development, which includes going north from Fifty Sixth along Thirty Eighth up about to Sixtieth Street. And since we are in the middle of design for Thirty Eighth Avenue improvements, we thought it would be logical to do the same this time for the Thirty Eighth Avenue improvements that we did for Fifty Sixth and install dry sewer. We didn't get that into the original scope with KPFF to do the work. And so we are looking to have that task added with this contract amendment. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Councilmember Look.
Yes, thank you so much. If we do this, when we do this, would this affect whether the sidewalks go on which side of Thirty Eighth Street? Does this have anything to do with that?
It does not, no.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open up the public comment on this agenda item. And again, you'll have three minutes to speak. Anyone from the audience in the audience tonight that wishes to speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Josh, were there any written comments submitted?
There are no written comments for this item.
And any hands raised from our online audience?
I don't see any hands raised online.
Okay. All right, we will close the public comment and move on to council deliberation and action. Councilmember Look.
Mayor Markley, thank you. I move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract with KPFF Inc. in an amount not to exceed twenty seven thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second. And I see no other lights. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any abstain? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, council. And we will move right along to our new business item three, which is our professional services contract amendment for the commercial fishing home port. And this suggested motion is to move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract amendment with DeVito Consulting Group Incorporated in an amount not to exceed forty four thousand two hundred and sixty one dollars. And again, this report will come to us from Public Works Director Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in January this year, the city entered into a professional services contract with David O. Consulting Group to provide design and permitting services for the commercial fishing home port floats at Ansich Park. Since the contract was executed in January, the city and DCG have proceeded from conceptual design to sixty percent design. Along the way, some of the tasks that were prepared as part of the original contract have been adjusted to create and and created a need for proposed contract amendment you have before you tonight. Specifically, we have a few tasks. Some of those tasks are required as part of the permitting process, and some of those tasks are voluntary. So I'm just going to break them apart real quick for you. The required tasks are due to the additional mitigation that's required because of a change in a national marine fisheries mitigation calculator. We have been every time we go forward with an overwater project, we have approached the federal agencies for permitting and have to look at how much mitigation we need to do if we're going to put a structure over the water. National Marine Fisheries is the federal agency that manages how much mitigation is required for that type of impact. And so they have what they call a calculator. It's a very detailed Excel spreadsheet that determines based on current federal law how much mitigation is required. And so between the last time we did overwater permitting for overwater structures and this time and in this summer, the mitigation calculator has changed. So that has created the need for more mitigation. Given a summary to council earlier this year that we were looking at more mitigation. But this is the result of that additional mitigation is we need to David O. Consulting Group now needs to go back and do more work to acquire design permit and construct that additional mitigation. So that's the required part. The voluntary task that the city has taken on is to provide additional features included in the structure for the commercial fishing home port float that have been requested by the commercial fishing operators. This includes some revisions to the gate that are on the existing pier. Right now, the outer edge of the of the Ansich Pier has a fixed gate. Commercial fishing operators have asked for that to be split into two and have it be an opening gate, kind of like what's on the side of the Ansich Pier. And then adding some fender piles so commercial fishing vessels can come up alongside the front of the or the outward part of the pier where this proposed gate is going to go. And then lastly, some electrical service upgrades to the float system beyond what we originally designed for. So those are the major tasks that are included as part of this contract amendment. I did want to mention that we are now, since we're at sixty percent design, we have a new cost estimate back at conceptual cost estimate. We're looking at a total project cost of about two point six million. As of sixty percent design, the project cost is now at about three point two million. So we'll keep you up to date on those as we proceed. Happy to discuss any more project details. I know I'm going to be giving a CIP report later this week. Happy to discuss those there too, but that's what I have for you tonight.
Great, thank you so much, Jeff. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Langham. I have a couple of questions. One's a pretty quick one on the actual funding for the design amendment. It noted that the there were unused funds from the advanced mitigation project. Are we going to need those funds later on for the actual mitigation? I just want to figure out whether we're taking money from something that we're going to have to use later on.
Yes, we those those same funds could be reallocated for the home port float itself, the project. But we wouldn't be expending those this year. And so we just looked at this and said, well, we have existing funds already allocated in the two thousand and twenty two budget for what was supposed to be advanced mitigation that we're not going to be using. And so we're just saying for this calendar period, two thousand and twenty two, we are we're going to have some unused funds. We will be as part of the twenty three twenty four proposed biennial budget. We are allocating funds for the complete construction costs similar on the level that what I just described here at three point two million dollars.
Okay, thanks. And the second question I had was of the non-required items that this design amendment is supposed to fix, most especially, I guess, the upgrade to the power source to the docks. Do we have an idea, even a rough estimate, of how much that's going to add to the construction cost? I mean, this is the design portion of it, which is not a great deal of money, but this is going to result in additional work being done on the project, which is going to have a much larger cost later on.
It will. And we don't have sperm numbers for the complete electrical service upgrades from thirty amp to thirty and fifty amp service because we still need to get some final design and from Peninsula Light Company and get their estimate also. But roughly, we're looking in the eighty to hundred thousand dollar range.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rothenberg.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that the upgrade in the electrical isn't something we just decided would be nice. It's something that wasn't. something that we just decided would be nice. It's something that wasn't included, although asked for at the beginning of the project. And I think at that time, the vessels that were gonna park there could have used thirty amps. But this is going to make the whole thing much more versatile. Every float place will have fifty amp, so any vessel can park there. So it may cost more, but it's gonna make it much more valuable and useful. So it's not like bells and whistles. It's actually something that's required. And the bumper that is, they've asked for on the pier is something that probably should have been designed to begin with, because the whole idea was to have the fishing vessels pull up and be able to load and unload off that pier. But right now, there's no bumper, so the vessels, as big as they are, slide underneath the pier. So these aren't things that are just bells and whistles that'll be nice. These are things that are actually required. So I support this a hundred percent, and would like to see it move forward quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions from Council? Okay, seeing none, I will open up the public comment for this agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. Josh, were there any written comments received?
There are no written comments for this item.
And any hands raised in our online audience?
I have no hands raised.
Okay, all right, we will close the public comment on this agenda item and open it up for council deliberation and action. Councilmember Rothenberg.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract amendment with DeVito Consulting Group in an amount not to exceed forty four thousand two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I see no other lights, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Council. And if there is no objection from Council, I would like to take a five-minute break. The time is six forty-two, so we will reconvene at six forty-seven. Thank you. Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Monday, September twelfth. The time is six forty-nine P M. And we are moving right along to our new business item four, which is our agreement with Civic Plus for Next Request Public Records Request Portal. And the suggested motion is to move to authorize the mayor to execute an annually renewing agreement with Civic Plus for Next Request Public Records Request Portal, and this report comes from our city clerk, Josh Sticker.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this request is from, for a program from Civic Plus, which is the city's website provider, for a program called Next Request. Next Request is a portal that goes right on our website that allows our residents and citizens to submit records requests and have them be tracked and responded to live on our website, so they're publicly viewable. This program has a lot of features that are beneficial to our residents because they can see readily, you know, how their request is progressing, how we're doing on responding, you know, what documents we've already got available for them. But it also provides a lot of backend features that are gonna make it a lot easier for staff to respond to requests, particularly our police department. The way, the number of requests we're getting now, it's usually about, the police department usually gets about two requests for every one request that other departments get. And their requests usually come with a lot of requirements for things like redactions and dealing with confidential information. This program has built into it a redaction system that's going to streamline the process and save the police department quite a bit of time. It'll also help us with coordination between other departments, like the Building and Planning Department and our Engineering Department in fulfilling their requests. It's really, really has a lot of neat features that I think are gonna save the city a lot of time and thereby a lot of money and staff costs. So this is one of a number of website features that we've been working on. We came to council about a month or so ago about the C Click Fix Program and the AudioEye Program. Just a lot of features that we're really trying to get up and running that are gonna make our website a much more user-friendly tool for our residents. So if there are any questions about the program, I'm happy to answer those. Once we get this in place and rolled out, bring it back to council and give you a tutorial on how it looks and let you see how the program works.
Great, thank you, Josh. Councilmember Storset.
Yes, thank you. So I was just curious, you know, when we talk about these improvements and enhancing with the public records requests, how much time, I know you mentioned it will save time. It'll be definitely very transparent for, you know, for people that are putting in requests. If you had to put like hours to it or a percentage, what would you estimate?
So I would estimate, I can't give you a total number of hours, but the police department, they probably spend roughly something like a half of an F T E dealing with records requests each year. I think it could probably lower that down to about point three five or point four. So it's a decent chunk of time that it can save them. And it's just on top of the time savings, it's really just gonna offer a much better product for residents. Right now, they get everything from us by an email. And it works, we communicate with them well, but this is gonna really give them a system that's gonna make it a lot simpler for us to use.
Perfect, thank you. I liked it already. I'd like more.
Thank you. Any other clarifying, yes, Councilmember Barber.
City Clerk Sticker, what's the timing on installation of this, assuming that we pass this tonight?
That is, we have a meeting set up tomorrow, just with our consultant to let them know if we've approved going forward with that or not. They're ready to get rolling on it and get it set up and running. I know our police department is anxious to get it going too. We are working on the C Click Fix Program and the app and the AudioEye programs that were approved last month, and those aren't quite ready to roll out yet either. So there may be a little bottleneck getting all of them up and going, but we are trying to kind of gear everything towards being up and running before the first of next year. And towards that, as you'll see in the contract, the Civic Plus is not going to bill us for any use we get out of this program until the first of the year.
Thank you. Councilmember Storset, did you have another question? Okay, great. Okay, seeing no other lights from Council, I will open up the public comment on this agenda item. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item tonight? Okay, seeing none. Josh, were there any written comments submitted?
There are no written comments for this item.
And any hands raised in our online audience?
I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, all right, we will close the public comment on this agenda item and go to council deliberation and action. Councilmember Liggins.
Yes, I move to authorize the mayor to execute an annually renewing agreement with Civic Plus for Next Request Public Records Request Portal.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. And seeing no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, Council. Okay, so we will move on to new business item five, which was removed from the consent agenda. And I will turn it over to city clerk Sticker.
Thank you, Mayor. This item was on the consent agenda initially. This is the appointment of Allison Snodgrass and Jason Jordan to the Planning Commission. We opened up applications to the Planning Commission earlier this summer. I think that first went live on June first. We had, when we closed the application period, we had a total of eight applicants. The applicants were initially interviewed by Carl DeCemus and Roxy Robles of our planning department. And after that interview, they, four of the candidates were interviewed by the mayor personally. And after that interview process, the two that were selected for appointment were Allison Snodgrass and Jason Jordan. During this process, council was initially given all eight of the original applicants. And then when the process was narrowed down to four applicants, we advised council of who those would be. And then council was informed before the packet was posted who the mayor's appointed selections would be. Council rules have stipulated that all appointments will be confirmed by council on the consent agenda, so it was on the consent agenda for this meeting. And at the request of Councilmember Look, we have moved this to new business five.
Great, thank you, Josh. Any clarifying questions from Council? Okay, seeing none, I will open up public comment on this agenda item. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this agenda item tonight? Okay, seeing none. Josh, were there any written comments submitted? I wouldn't believe so, but were there any?
Not for a consent agenda item, no.
Okay, and any hands in the audience raised online?
No hands raised.
Okay, all right, we will close the public comment portion and open it up for council deliberation and action. Councilmember Barber.
I move to appoint Allison Snodgrass and Jason Jordan to the Planning Commission with terms expiring June thirty, two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Look.
Yes, thank you. I pulled this from the consent agenda this evening. I'm not going to be voting to confirm these appointments to the Planning Commission this evening, and our citizens need to know why. As your council member, I was allowed to submit questions to the Planning Commission applicants. But as your elected representative, I am not allowed to hear any answers to those questions from the applicants. Yet I am supposed to confirm appointments. So again, as a council member, I was allowed to submit questions to the Planning Commission candidates. But as your elected representative, I am not allowed to hear any answers to those questions from the applicants. Yet I am supposed to confirm appointments. This process makes no sense. It is not transparent for anyone, and this process needs to be reworked. That's why I'll be voting no on this confirmation.
Thank you. Any other comments from Council? And just for clarification, the council members, it's not that they are not allowed to hear answers. That, I believe, was an oversight on my part due to a back injury for a couple of weeks, and so I did not compile that information for council, and my apologies to you. Those council members that would like to see those specific answers to those specific questions, I am more than happy to provide those to you. I just did not have a chance to do that when I was injured, so my apologies for that. But that certainly is something that I would be more than happy to provide.
Mayor?
Yes.
The process for this again is new as the the regulations were recently amended, and as going forward, we'd like to work with council to get questions specific for each board and commission that would be asked on the application materials.
Yes.
So that the individual applicants will then write out the answers to those questions, and that information will be provided to each council member. So I do believe that we have resolved the council receiving the answers to the questions that they sent in, and we intend to do that moving forward.
Yes, and thank you for your flexibility as we get used to the new process here. Okay, so I don't see any other lights from Council. So all those in favor of appointing Allison Snodgrass and Jason Jordan to the Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
They.
Any abstain? Okay, motion passes six one. Thank you, Council. All right. Make sure I know where we are in our schedule here. We will move to council reports and comments. Anything from Council that you'd like to share? Councilmember Barber.
I just wanted to note for everyone, if you haven't stopped by the hallway right out here, there's a wonderful rock display that has been put together. Diane Bertram told me about this last week, and there are several artists who paint three rocks a day and hide them around town, and they are really amazing works of art. So I wanna make sure that you all see it, and I'm hoping that more people in the public will come and see these and find rocks, and evidently, if you find one, you can take it home or you can re-hide it. And there's information about the Gig Harbor Rocks Group that you can follow on Facebook. It's really pretty fun, and I just love that we do this kind of thing.
It is fun. Thank you, Councilmember Barber. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. This last, was it Sunday, right? Sunday. Councilmember Dentson and I attended the nine eleven memorial led by Chief Don. It was a very moving tribute that he gave in honor of the many L E Os and firefighters that were lost during the attacks on the Twin Towers. It was very well worth going to, and I was glad that Councilmember Dentson and I were there to represent the city council.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Liggins.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report that on August ninth, I attended the Whisper Meeting for our council member Roger Henderson, who was out of town enjoying maybe Lake Cuomo, Italy, I believe, at the time. Yeah. And we approved a ranked list of salmon recovery projects, and we also did a field visit to the Chico Creek Restoration Project. And it was really, really amazing. So it's nice to see that moving along. And then I also attended, along with Councilmember Look, Mayor Markley and City Administrator Knutson, a discussion with the Greater Gig Harbor Foundation and the Senior Center. We just wanted to learn more about Senior Center services and to explore how we can partner potentially to help provide senior services to the city. I also attended, I know also Councilmember Look and Henderson were there at the Senior Center Open House. And I just wanna give a shout out to Joyce Schultz and the amazing work that she's done to keep that moving, to provide those services throughout the pandemic to the seniors in the community. And then lastly, because I'm the resident healthcare provider, I just wanna remind people, number one, it's amazing to be in person again. Covid numbers are good. Everybody's doing their part and keeping up good work. And as the emergency declaration goes away, I just wanna remind people, they're handy to have around, especially with school back in session. You can still, every month, and it resets on the first of month, order ten free Covid tests. They're sent to your house from Amazon. It's very easy. And it's SayYesCovidTest, excuse me, SayYesCovidHomeTest.org. And each household can order up to ten of those, so you might just wanna stack them up and make them more handy. If you have tests that are old and they have expiration dates on them, the FDA did change those to expire a month or a year later. So they found that they hold and they keep, so don't toss those. And then also, I wanted to let people know, if you test positive, to contact your healthcare provider because there are treatment options that we can provide. And if you don't have a provider or can't get seen within forty-eight hours, you can go online to DOH.Wa.gov and you write Covid nineteen telehealth, and you can get a free online visit to see if oral antiviral treatment is right for you. It's available to every person in this state free of charge. And then, of course, the updated boosters and flu shots are available, and so if you so choose to do that, you can combine them and have a nice healthy, and then you stay away from seeing me in the hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Liggins. Councilmember Look.
Yes, thank you. I think it was in two thousand and twenty-one that council voted in the budget extra money for rapid flashing beacons, just in case we had a spot where we could use them. And it was sure nice that we had them because our Public Works Department put them in at Pacific Avenue crosswalks right before school, school began. So a great big thank you for getting that done in a very timely fashion. Also, I've heard from the Legacy Homeowners Association, Mr. DeCemus. And they're very grateful for the timeliness for Mr. DeCemus and Aaron Hulse, I think, working with the Homeowners Association and the tree issue, so thank you there. And one last thing. I continue to hear frustration from many parts of our community about being able to get a phone number for our police after hours. And I don't think our police officers should really be giving out personal cellphone numbers, no matter how wonderful our police department is. So I know that we've got a budget discussion coming up. I don't know what our police department might be putting forward if they need I don't know what our police department might be putting forward if they need additional staffing. But I'd like to, if if there's a way to maybe have. Phone number, or maybe we need.
I'm a bit confused by the information you're getting, because each officer has a department-issued cellphone.
Yes.
And our regular phone number forwards right to our 24-hour dispatch. So I'm not sure. Maybe you can speak to me offline about what you're hearing, because that doesn't sound consistent with what we're doing.
All right, thank you. I'll be happy to speak to you. Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, let's, I know that we have, you know, we're a small city, we have big city problems. So I look forward to hearing what you've got coming for us in your budget request. So I think that's really it.
Helicopter.
We've gone from drones to helicopters. Come on now.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wook. Councilmember Denson.
Well, I was going to thank Chief Bucy for arranging a ride-along for me, and now I want to ride along on the helicopter. Yeah, that sounds good. So on Friday, I did a ride-along with Officer Irwin. And the same evening, our HR Director Shannon Castanti was with Officer Bonzib. And I think the word on the street was that we were on the job, and so it was very quiet that night. Yeah, they had been warned to stay out of Gig Harbor because Shannon and Robin were on patrol. Um, I did find out where all the teenagers hang out at night, which is very useful to somebody with two teenagers. So that was, that was fascinating. I really, really enjoyed it, and I learned a lot about how hard our police officers work to keep us safe. And they were, we were all over town all night, just, you know, being very proactive and preventing crime. I'm sure we did, right, Shannon? It was great. I want to mention the Korean Moon Festival happened yesterday, which was a city-sponsored event. So congratulations to us because it was wonderful. The Asia-Pacific Cultural Center put on just a first-class show with amazing performances, amazing food. I'm hoping this will grow year after year. The Tacoma one is huge, so I think when the word gets out that we have one here on the waterfront, it will grow even more, but it was wonderful. And then just a quick reminder that our studio tour is this weekend, which is a really awesome way for people to learn the community and visit, you know, our talented artisans around town. Thanks.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Starset.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to give a thank you, Chief Bucy, to you and your officers that were out for Race for a Soldier this weekend. Saw you bright and early Sunday morning and been able to do this through the city. Thank you, like everyone, because I didn't run the half marathon. That's full disclaimer there. Did run the 5K through the neighborhoods. But I did see the course, and you know, I know that's not an easy thing to pull off, but much appreciated by the Permission to Start Dreaming Foundation and all those that came out. I don't think they realize what it takes to put on these kind of events. So thank you. Nobody got hurt. So that's good.
Great, that's great.
Thank you.
Yes, and and it was an honor to attend the prayer breakfast on Friday morning. Chief Bucy was there and and City Minister Knutson was there as well. And just a lovely event and a wonderful reminder of just what our officers, first responders, military can go through in their line of duty. And so great way to honor them and memory of those lost and celebration of those that are still here with us. And so wonderful event, and thank you. I echo Councilmember Starset's thanks for our police department and their help for Race for a Soldier. It's really a phenomenal event and a and a great cause. So thank you so much. Let's see, a couple lights are still on, but I think that's maybe accidental. Unless you have more you'd like to add.
Yeah, I'll just add in, Lee just called me out, or Councilmember Rodenberg just called me out. But Robin and Lee were both very, were volunteers for the race as well. Lee parked four or 500 cars. And Robin, I don't know all of exactly what you're doing. I know you've been a marshal in the past.
Checking people in and giving t-shirts.
You got a great volunteer.
Robin is everywhere.
The nine 9/11 as well. I knew that was one thing I was going to have to miss that morning, but that's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, council, for being so involved in our community. It's been really neat for them to get to know you better and us to get to know them better. So announcement of upcoming meetings is on our website. We have our city meetings calendar attached to the agenda. We have, and also, as always, the city's two-year strategic plan is on there as well. We had one more executive session tonight before we adjourn. So we will now go into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss pending litigation per RCW42.30.110 parentheses one parentheses I and the acquisition of real estate per RCW42.30.110 parentheses one parentheses B. And no action will be taken following the executive session.
Action, action will be taken.
Oh, action will be taken. Excuse me. So the, let's see, it's 7/11, so we will return approximately 7:21, 7:22.
The executive session is extended for an additional five minutes until 7:28 PM. The executive session is extended an additional three minutes until 7:32 PM.
Uh, welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council. Can't even talk. Council meeting, that's Monday, September 12, 2022. The time is 7:35 PM. We have returned from executive session where action will be taken, and I will turn it over to our city attorney, Daniel Kenny.
Yeah, staff would appreciate a motion from council to approve the participation agreement and allocation agreement for the opioid litigation.
So moved. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, council. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Anybody want Seahawks score?
Yes, Seahawks score. They're winning.
17, 13, and the fourth quarter.